Alright, good evening, everyone. I'm calling day two of the board planning meeting to order. And we will just jump into it. Um, the first thing is reviewing the vision, mission, beliefs and values. Are there any comments here? Any? Desire to change? It's just the policy says that we will review annually, so that's what we're doing. Reviewing it annually.
I made some good changes last year, I think they're.
Alright. Fifteen seconds, we're off to a good start, okay? Alright. Check. Okay, and then the next thing is formulating goals and objectives. Sorry. Okay. So our goals right now are student growth and student achievement. That is, I believe, what we changed and we did not. Last year, I think the growth is probably what we added here, maybe not. But then maybe we didn't transfer it to the measure measurables is my guess. And then parent and community engagement, communication with stakeholders, supportive learning environment for each student, recruitment, staff retention and professional development and fiscal responsibilities. Is there a desire to change any of these or add? Something?
I do think it is important to add the student growth metrics to goal number one?
Yes, so I think that will go on.
Are you just asking, are we adding goals now, not measures?
I might have messed up here. Hold on, sorry. No, we're gonna, yes, okay, the accountability plan. So yes, it's all in one, but okay, so the first step is are we good with the titles, I guess, I don't know, the actual goal, like the overarching goals, categories, that's a good word for it. Okay, so then the next, so if we're good with overarching goals, then we'll go to the accountability plan activity. Where there's only three of us, so I'm not gonna limit, like, you know, when there was more of us, it was like, don't bring thirty-five suggestions. But in this case, I think I'm gonna forego those guidelines and we can just add um what we, what we wish. I guess I can just go up there and write. For a second, I thought these were the scented markers and I was like, wow, that's really bringing it back to my elementary days, I don't know, so, okay. Goal one is over here. I'm just gonna bring this with, so, okay, just connected. Okay, so sorry. Okay, so goal one is student growth and student achievement, so we want to add growth metric.
The student growth percentile?
Yeah. Okay. And then we go from yesterday's, I think. There. So right now, we have the smarter balance proficiency under this, are we all, if you go back to yesterday, I don't know, it's kind of star thicker as well. That's if, star, yes. Carmen is so organized. I know it was you, Carmen, I know it was. Um.
This hurts, that hurts, it's painful.
And so we can go through those, so we have adding student growth percentiles, however that looks, we'll have to get feedback on that. Okay, so we have this fifth grade smarter balance proficiency in the LA math and science, eighth grade, and then graduation rate. And then career ready, um, benchmarks, attendance pathways, GPA, AP exams.
Do we have any interest in breaking down the different career pathways? And knowing which career pathways are most popular or identifying that or is that a hassle?
I, I mean, I think that'd be good to know, but is it something that we're going to evaluate the superintendent on? So like, is the different pathways a?
No, no.
But I think we could put that into, like, when we do our CTE written report or report, we can make sure that the breakdown of those pathways comes forward.
Does that work?
Yeah, of course. And then I'm also very interested in the disaggregation of this data by race and ethnicity and by socioeconomic status.
For every category?
I'm trying to figure out which ones might give us a good snapshot of trying to discern where our areas of inequity are. And maybe I can lean into some of our administrators who probably are aware of this data already to say what what are the best ones for us to be tracking? I think we said yesterday that the smarter balance probably isn't the most effective assessment, so that's probably not where we want to go. But maybe the student growth percentiles or maybe graduation rates, maybe I, algebra pass rates, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, but I am concerned about areas of inequity and want to know where ours are and how they're closing.
Well, my recommendation would be, like, as you guys give us this overarching, we would like to see these pieces, that then we go back as an instructional council and then look at how we can break that down and then provide you by, you know, between now and June, because by June, we would want to present, hey, this is what came out of January for next year, but between now and then, we could provide you with some snapshots of, and then you could say, yeah, I think that's what I was thinking, or or no, or indifferent, because then we could feel, quote unquote, feel the, the, uh, the direction that you're looking towards. But I would want my team to be able to kind of break down some of the data and go this, we think this is it, and we could bring it to you and say, is this it?
Uh huh, yeah, and just from my own personal knowledge, I would love like a breakdown of the pathways and what courses are utilized in each, just for my own.
I didn't hear the last part.
The courses that complete each pathway.
Oh, that's easy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's also a lot of great data on our website.
See, that's what I'm saying.
That's a piece we can put together as a written document for your board brief, that's, we can grab that easy.
Sometimes it's just a matter of knowing where to look.
Data broken down by demographics. Okay. Anything else? Anything we don't find valuable on here, because we don't want people pulling data that we don't find valuable? No?
May I ask how subjective grading is?
How, I didn't hear the question.
How subjective, like, when you're looking at grade point averages, two point eight out of four point oh, what, what type of I don't want to say reconciliation, but what, what type of standard, I don't like that word either. Yeah, yeah, what, what, how, how do you ensure that grading practices are equitable among teachers and students and programs?
Well, the curriculum is what it is, so that's objective, the standard is what it is, so that's objective. And then there's, I mean, I can't say there's never some subjectivity in humans.
Sure.
And so, you know, an A is an A, and then that's assigned a certain GPA value, B is a B. Now, that's not always, like, if we got into standard-based grading versus, you know, where a student meets the standard, we're not there as a district, but I think that we do look at rubrics that are designed within the grade level or the, the department. And so then there's that level of commonality as I'm looking at, did this happen? Again, there's probably some subjectivity in the person rating. So I would say it's an objective process that maybe has some holes. But we're for the most part, it's, it's it's designed for a letter grade that meets a, a, a numeric value, and then the algorithm at the end creates what the grade is, or gives you what the grade is. My hitting the button, probably.
Like, there's always gonna be a a little bit of subjectivity, I mean, that.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, chime in.
There is inner rate of reliability that does occur within our PLC groups at the secondary level, where they are calibrating their common classroom assessments between classrooms. On top of that, our board procedure, district procedure, is that grade books are based on seventy percent of the students' overall grade is based on summatives, and at least thirty percent is based on formative quizzes and other checks for understanding. So there are some guiding posts that we use to monitor our evaluation of student learning.
And then, my question is for the GPA. Do we know why, where the two point eight came from? I, I don't know, this was probably in here a long time ago, but oh, is it research-based? I got nothing.
It's a research-based, national normed, two point eight has correlation to student success post-high school.
Two point eight kind of scared me a little bit, but probably, I'm like, okay, C, higher than a C average, I have to remember that, but.
B minus, C plus area.
What was more of a, oh, try harder. Okay. Alright, anything else? Are we good? Okay, goal two, parent and community engagement. Um if you remember last year, oh, this isn't communications, nevermind, I'm on the wrong wrong goal, anyhow. Engagement, is there anything we're suggesting we remove, add? Um yeah, I believe we removed the social media metrics last year, because they just were kind of stagnant, I I'm not gonna evaluate a different kind of manner, and if we have another Twitter follower or X or whatever, but so that change was made last year. Are there any other changes that we want to make?
I'm just looking at the Skyward access, and that data doesn't mean a whole lot to me as it is presented.
Yeah.
Um, I'm much more curious about conference rates and the survey rates. Maybe if it were a percentage of families that accessed or a percentage of, I don't, I don't know, it just, it doesn't feel very meaningful.
Yeah, it's, the reason it's meaningful to me is it kind of shows, it, I see your point, but it shows like is that increasing, are people becoming more familiar with the technology, accessing it more, checking grades, being active? Not, I don't know, I'm not gonna say active parents, but like, are is your involvement on the login of Skyward, but there probably is a percentage, but I don't know if that's even a possibility to figure out, like a percentage of families that access it, because what if a mom, like, a mom accesses it and then a dad and then?
Yeah, so the individual logins is, can be deceptive in nature, just because that's how many times it was logged in by an individual that that could be one person three hundred and forty-nine thousand times, right? We know that's not the case. So we could look into whether or not we can pare that down. We do like, and, and it may not be what you guys want to monitor, we like to monitor how active that is, because then we get a feel for is that a tool that parents are using? I know when I was a parent in this district, for three children, I used it quite often. Because it helps me monitor quickly, like, okay, oh, you have a missing assignment, tell me about that, right?
I think it's a helpful piece of data for y'all to monitor in the district. I don't know that it's part of our accountability plan for how many families are on there, because it looks like, I mean, the numbers have gone up some, but at some point, you also hit, like, the critical mass of families that know this tool and are using it, and then maybe if you change tools, like, tracking for a little bit again, but again, I'm just thinking that that's your work and not our work, but that's one person's idea.
I can understand that, I like it too, like, I think it's a community finding if I'm wrong, um a good piece, well, I mean, you're kind of evaluating, are you educating parents? So the kindergarten parents that come in, are we educating them? Are those logins staying the same? Because to me, that would say, like, okay, twelfth grade leaves, kindergarten comes in, if there's a drop in that number, maybe we didn't educate the kindergarten family, so I wouldn't, I would be hesitant to remove it. Only because are we continuing our level of communication of how important this access is as new families come into the district?
Yeah, we're constantly educating families on the use of Skyward, because it's not just to check a progress report, right? It's to upload documents, it's to update your contact information, et cetera, so again, not certain how, like, we find the information important. Not sure that it's, you know, coming back to what you said, Director Kim, is it is it important to you as a board to monitor as opposed to important for us to have the data, so?
And, and in that same, just below, I understand attendance, but what does it mean, seven thousand two hundred sixty-two people checked attendance? Or what does that number mean? What does fifty-three emergency mean and what does one thousand six hundred eighty-nine outreach mean?
I have to admit, I don't know what the emergency means, to be honest with you, so oh. I think you're right.
Those change each year depending on the situation, it's just a standard practice that we, we have CLC during COVID. And then when we had some shifts with bus transportation issues, so it's something we keep track of individually, I don't know how useful that.
So the question is, what does emergency mean, but those are emergency outreach messages?
Yeah, so that is, if it's anything outside of the normal school day, so if we do inclement weather, there's a lockdown at a school, if there's late buses, so it encompasses anything that is outside a normal school general notification.
So those are measures for how we engage our community, a portion of our community, because that's specific to parents, right, students and, and parents.
And it's so for attendance, what is, like, I, I get what you're saying, so what is that definition of, under attendance?
Those would be attendance calls that go out, so Zach Banner was absent for first period. And, and then the second, he was absent again, which registers your absent for the day, and those go out twice a day, and so that's informing a parent. So it is, and then, this is important, because, again, coming back, is it important for you, because this is your document? For us, we would still monitor this data to show that we are being effective in communicating with parents or not, and then make adjustments as appropriate.
Yes, the only value it brings to us is, okay, are we having a skyrocket in attendance, but this goal is communication and community engagement, not attendance.
Right.
Correct.
So I don't know, I, I would be fine for removing that aspect, but.
And, and what does outreach do? Is that just announcements about meetings?
The general notifications of the school district, so that could be our late start Wednesday notifications, because we have high trans latency in the school district. It would include weekly notifications regarding, you know, schedule. You name it, if there's a message from the superintendent, so it all encompasses that, it's general, school-based and district-based.
So I think that would probably continue to be valuable to know how many messages are being sent to the families.
For which one?
Outreach.
Okay, let me just
Yeah.
Remove that, until you keep that one?
Yeah, I think outreach. Yeah, and I guess my expectation is that these things happen, but I don't know that the tracking the numbers makes much difference to me. Yeah, it doesn't track the content, it doesn't track the engagement, it doesn't track how many people, it's just, this is one-way communication that went out, great, yes, we expect that, but yeah, I don't know.
So for our sake, I feel like we're in the middle of take it all out or take portions of it out, and we would need to know that moving forward.
Okay, so got ahead of myself here, so I had outreach and then I removed outreach.
I know, and I'm, I'm open either way, so you make the decision and I'm fine with it. Because she said I know, but you know, it's like, we have to vote on it all later anyway.
Well, I know, why didn't you put a dot over here?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, okay, just include it then.
Include.
Yeah, we'll just include it.
Sorry, Carmen, there you go, very, very neat. No, I, I did want to, I personally want to keep the logins, but that's one person, so if someone wants to put it on here to be voted on, totally can. Although then again, he wouldn't get free. If I could rocket it, it would probably be pointless, I guess. It's just the three of us tonight, so wow, all of us have to agree, there we go. Good times, okay.
Scale down to two. We could scale down to two. Two meet that moves.
Two out of three.
Not by definition, I guess, I don't know. Subjective, maybe, I don't know. Okay. Anything else? Good to go to the next goal, okay. Goal three, communication with stakeholders. Any changes requested? I'm always impressed by the number of interpreters that like skyrocket every year. Like, you know what, that might be a lie, I think, what's up the data, tell me that, it did skyrocketed from twenty twenty-two to
Yeah, I had thought we got rid of the social media things on here.
I thought we did. Oh, you know, we took away Twitter.
It was X, yes.
X, whatever, it's never gonna be X to me, it will always be Twitter. Okay, do we want to remove all of them? Truly, I do not care, I know that that sounds really bad, but like I'm not judging you if we get a Facebook like.
Actually, I think this is your document and how you want to monitor, we would still, through that department look at that and to see where we're at, but we're not feeling like if you want to remove something, that we've, we're gonna feel bad about that, like, this is your way to help govern, so.
Remote your contract and your engagement order with a like us on Facebook sign to get those numbers up.
Yeah, I mean, the most important piece here is that community reporting, we're keeping them informed, excellent and good, right? That, yes. And you have to do those Facebook and Instagram and outreach on everything to get that, but that's, that's where I'm looking, and how y'all get there is how you get there.
I do like the number of visits to the website.
I do too.
The website is where we hold
Yes.
the majority of our information, but I would be fine to remove Facebook and Instagram, you do a great job with that, but I just am not gonna be.
No, I agree, that's the means to the end.
Maybe I'll add TikTok and make it only for ninety days, though. Then it would, the goal would be gone. Okay, anything else?
We're good there.
Alright. Goal four, I'm over here now. Uh, supportive equitable learning environment for each student. Any suggestions? I'm gonna write something down, whatever.
I would recommend that you give us permission as we look at different ways to survey our children and our families before we change any of this, but if we saw something that we thought might be more powerful, that we could bring to you to, to indicate this is a recommendation, and if you were, you know, in approval, then we might make some adjustments there.
Alright.
Yeah, I think the absentee rate is good, the surveys are good, as, adjust as needed. I think this is another place where I'm curious about disaggregated data. Who's being suspended, who's being chronically absent, who's being truant? Is it proportionate to our our population served?
For these apps, is the I was gonna say breakdown of data, because I'm not gonna spell check, okay? Alright, and
I mean, it's tough, because I feel like some of the measures in, in number one also belong here, right? So disaggregation of who has access to middle school algebra, disaggregation of who has access to AP classes, that all speaks to equitable learning environments. So I think there's overlap between these two categories as we're assessing them.
Or would it be, you're looking for who's actually in the class, not who has ac- access, right? Because students may have access to it, but they're not taking it, but we care about who
Who's taking it, right, by access, I mean, who's accessing the course by enrolling in it. So I just think as we're maybe we move one and four closer together, since that data's compatible and I don't know. Like, make goal number four number two, or make goal number one number three, so they're we're reviewing them in sequence, or just when you give us the data, put them, the numbers don't matter, but.
No, this, this is something we could shift, so I will say, goal one has always, student growth and student achievement is like
Number one.
Number one, that has always been number one, but I wouldn't, and then, uh, I don't you know, parent and community engagement obviously is important, there was a big push of parent, you know
Yeah.
parents in the classroom, some of that, totally fine, I'm fine with moving goal four up to goal two. Yeah, yeah, so this would be got that, or you want me to write it on here for later?
Well, again, I'm one voice, so we gotta, we have to, okay.
The data does, so, okay, student achievement and growth, and then The data does. So, okay, student achievement and growth and then um, and then we want to know the.
Supportive, equitable.
Like those do go hand in hand. So, okay, we care about student growth and achievement. Now, what does that data breakdown say? I think that flows.
And then. Seven?
Five, seven, or five, six. Seven, seven, seven.
Okay, you're no longer past kindergarten.
I told you I needed a composite score. But I also would appreciate that because that also kind of where our district strategic plan centers around those, right? Also, so.
In any other data week, I think that I don't want to like bog folks down with like break down every single category, but I'd say like what makes sense, like this is important and then like a dash of any other like long-term suspensions. I feel like that would be an important, you know, like
Right.
What does that look like? Who are we suspending?
Right.
We know what the historical data has said. Have we made any shift in that?
Yeah, and I guess I'm feeling like leaving that up to the superintendent and his team to y'all look at the data, you share where parity is and where inequities are, and then we track the closing of those gaps.
I actually am excited by the conversation. This is what we do.
Yes.
And it's not a stretch to go, okay, lift that up and put it down into this document and prepare the conversations that we have. Because sometimes we have the conversations, right? Hey, we're seeing a gap here. This is not okay. And we need to make sure you guys are informed that we see that gap in what we're doing to address it. So I'm excited by the conversation.
The other thing I was thinking about in this area is like LRE data, least restricted environment. And how many of our students with IEPs have access to Gen Ed settings?
Are you speaking about the 80% that are included in the classroom versus because that's like a number in the bills that we're going to be talking about with the legislature?
Yes, and yes, all students. First of all, special education students are first and foremost general education students. And we strive for moving into the range of the 80, 20. And some students that won't work for because they are self-contained and require or in a given day, we may have a success classroom where most of the kiddos are out in Gen Ed, but something happens and we're going to have the home base for that student. So I'm not sure what that data would look like because it can be fluid. But I think we can analyze that.
Well, I'm also thinking like the November 1st data snapshot that you report to the feds, you could pull it out of iPads. Did you have something else? Mm hmm. Mm hmm. And just to, just to see where that is for this district and to talk a little bit about goals over time. If that is the goal, are you already there? Or what are your plans to get there? I know there's been a lot of work with the self-contained developmental preschool as Ecap moved in to give those kiddos access to Gen Ed classrooms. And I think that that's a good story we could tell.
The LRE, one, two, and three. I mean, it's data that we do look at and again, least restrictive environment is LRE.
Yeah, least restrictive environment, based on IEP placement, how many of our percentage of kids in our self-contained programs and from one, two to three. So that would be.
Least restrictive environment.
Easy data to pull for us.
Yeah, it's readily accessible. Exactly.
All environment, right? We will know shortly. Okay. Anything else? All right. Goal five, improve recruitment, staff retention and professional development.
Yeah, I thought we removed some of these last year, too. Like, again, for me, I, I don't care about like recognition of staff and staff spotlight. Like, I care that you do it, but the the outcome of that is lower teacher turnover. So how you get there is by providing that spotlight, that support, the positive feedback. The same with the networking events. I don't care where you go or how many you go to. If we don't have vacancies and we're keeping teachers in seats, that's the metric that I'm focused on.
Are the exit surveys anonymous or do people have to put their names on them?
Say they attach them to their like when they get their separation of employment piece, we do a link. But I don't know that they have to attach their name to them. Uh, forgive me for not knowing, but I'll find out.
Okay, just curious.
So we did just look like we just added the recognition of staff data on here. We can totally remove it. I can't remember it. I do care about the years of service because I feel like that provides valuable data point of how long folks have been in our district.
Sure.
I'm fine. We're moving. I mean, it's kind of interesting, you know, how many folks retire, but I I think that's also somewhere else, you know, the turnover. Yeah, I'm fine removing everything other than the years of service.
Sure.
Any objections to that?
No.
You said remove everything other than years of service?
Under the staff recognition, number of events, type of recognition.
Are you tracking this? Because I'm getting behind. Um, I want to go back to your question on the exit surveys. It may be a choice. And what, and the reason I say that is, again, I'm not saying I know and I should, maybe I should. But I do know that a recent exit survey, we were able to talk to the person to affect change. And if you don't, aren't able to talk to the person, then you don't get the details behind maybe what a concern might have been. So I do know that we do know some of them, but I will double check and make sure.
And then thinking about those surveys, I think that the data I missed interested in it, are you seeing any trends? Right? Are there trends in those exit data around why people are leaving or why? That would be something that I would assume your team would address, right?
Are they open-ended questions, though? That's what I'm wondering of like if they're open-ended, I don't know if the data could be reported to us necessarily, like if it was
Right.
Likely, most likely, whatever.
Right. Well, even open-ended questions, you can do qualitative analysis and see trends. Like if five teachers left and all five said they weren't feeling supported.
No, I I get that, but how would that be reported to the board? It's like, it may be on a workshop, it would be like a good thing, but like in here, I just don't know, like you know, that would mean that Lori's team would go through and analyze each thing. And honestly, some bias could go into the reporting because it isn't like it's whoever is looking at the data would be putting together their
Yeah, I don't know that I needed in here. I'm just, I think, saying as you do these surveys, if you notice trends.
For sure.
Bring them to us.
What will surveys are subjective.
Yeah.
And that's why you do have to look for trends, right? And this, you know, an old adage of if someone says you have a tail, you probably ignore them. If three people tell you, you might pause. If seven people tell you, you might peek back to see if there's a tail wagging, right? So you look for the trends, you look for aggregate data that suggests there might be something that we need to look at here.
And that was part of my curiosity.
There's something wagging. You will have the questions from the exit surveys in your board briefs Friday.
Yes, awesome. Thank you.
I was just trying to track, are you getting rid of the networking events?
Would you like us to?
Like, I I personally like to see it. I don't know.
These numbers, like in terms of how many events are going to, where are we going?
Doing? Are we going out of state? Because you know, what, one thing I do care about is the out of state because Washington is the one of the highest.
Number four.
Four, highest paid. So are we? Is that like a selling point or people are like, no, thanks? Like that's I I I am interested in who's coming here out of state. Like, you know, if you're, I don't know.
One of the things that we've found is that we weren't really getting a lot of yield for out of state. I think we went to a southern state. I forget which one it was. We might have coordinated that with a stop at HBCU space. But it was the, yes, you can stay in a southern state and the cost of living is less. You can come up here and the cost of living is more, but you get paid more. And so then there was this, are you going to pay a stipend for a person to lift up and move across country? And we weren't in the space to do that financially. And so I don't know that we yielded a lot, even out of our Portland trip to Portland. I don't know that we yielded a lot. We actually started talking about whether we should even spend the money to go down based on the yield. And and so.
Well, no, listen, it sounds like you're interested in like, where do our hires come from? Not where did you recruit from, right?
Want to put that to remove it, like all networking events I do.
Um, for me, it goes back to the networking events lead to our hires. The outreach events lead to our hires. And so I'm more interested in tracking the hires and leaving that up to the superintendent's team, how they ensure that we're fully staffed. That they go where they need to go, do the outreach they need to do so that we have teachers come August. And certificated staff or classified staff. Sorry.
I'm just kidding. That was my fault. Don't mind me.
Just looking, but the student teacher placement versus the number of student teachers hired. That's very interesting.
On page 95. That is because the data suggests that teachers are more likely to stay where they did their student teaching.
But not here.
But not here. Yeah, that is interesting.
Well, part of that is we also have a low number of
Turnover.
Turnover.
Oh, you don't have.
Positions for them to fill.
Think every student teacher is going to end their program ready to teach, not all do. But yeah, our turnover rate is not as significant.
Okay.
Are you ready for goal six? Physical responsibility.
Probably the cleanest set of data points in terms of it is, yeah.
It's interesting that the audit is, isn't on here as a measure.
Yeah, we've always just referenced it. It could be.
Like number of findings, hopefully zero.
Yeah, that's one you want to keep down.
Not go back in time, just move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could add that. Uh, what is it? So it's findings and
Exit items.
Just exit item.
It's interesting that it's not on there because we report it every time.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, and it's usually positive data.
Till the federal government gets involved.
All right, anything else?
Hopefully, we have a net similar workload. We added some things. We took some things off. But do we?
I, I think we
Kind of agreed.
I feel like we have a consensus. If there's something that's not approved and but.
Yeah, do we want to?
I mean, we don't.
We just want to say, do we have consensus?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I I feel.
We don't archive these documents for very long.
Okay.
Carmen will fold them up and use them as the measure, but do you feel like we're good?
We're good.
We're good. All right. And just because we did add some disaggregation, I think it's pretty easy data to get. But if it becomes a workload issue, you would let us know, like, you gave us a whole lot to do. Yeah.
All right. The next item is the board self-assessment. And we've kind of bypassed this, not bypassed, skipped. I don't know, whatever. This the past couple of years, we already knew the answer. And then last year it was a new board. So we'll get back on doing this. It it's kind of an unfortunate survey because you kind of grade yourself. And when you grade yourself, obviously, like you're not going to be like, I'm the worst. Okay, so maybe you do think you're the worst, but I mean, hopefully not. And so the data isn't as accurate, like as as meaningful. In the past, we did have the council team provide input. And I thought that that was the most wonderful thing, but we've moved away from that because there was, it was a little awkward and fear of retaliation. All real things that were occurring, you know, maybe in the future, that might be a thing again. If it really was valuable, like how did people outside the board think of you? Although we did do one where the board did it for others. We could bring that one back. Well.
Where you rated yourself, but you rated others as well.
My least favorite part of college when constructive criticism, but whatever. It is something to think of. I felt like it was more valuable because you weren't great, you weren't reflecting on your own. Um, it's like, it's the Wasta self-assessment. But it also creates awkward awkward times if someone provides input that you're not going anywhere, right? It's not like you can get fired. You're not like the community would have to fire you. So then you maybe say something, someone figures it out, and then you're sitting right across from them. And then, you know, someone holds a grudge for the next year. So it's something to think about. It provides positives, pros and cons.
Yeah, I think it it goes back to the level of trust that you have with each other on the board and your own personal openness to accept constructive feedback and look at it as an opportunity for growth and not criticism. I I think it would be valuable to get feedback from peers and from the council. I also wonder if any of the community surveys ask about how's the board doing managing the district or like to get that feedback from the community as well could be valuable.
What?
I just think back to a year ago, this exact meeting, and that was all.
What? I'm having short-term memory.
Are you? Okay. Okay. Well, no, but.
Be open. We're good.
No, because um, it was like the first of this type of meeting. I was unaware of the things that I was supposed to be prepared for, because I thought a work session meant you, you came to do the work, but I was supposed to have everything pre-read and I didn't. And then I was freaked out. And then we were working on the standard operating procedures. And then I had that whole, oh my God, I'm not agreeing to, you know, and I was like, that, you know, that, that didn't set. And so, yes, I do self-reflect on that. And you know, I feel that after we worked through that whole process, I felt a ton better. And I just own that from a year ago and say, oh, I get it. Yeah. So after a year.
Listen.
I know we've also rated self, rated others. I wonder if there, a good starting point is to rate the board as a whole.
Yeah.
Person's thinking about how are we functioning as a whole? And then there's not the, well, somebody said that about me or I said this about somebody. Cause I think honestly, when I look back, we may have jumped into that way too fast, right? Cause you have to have certain, when I say we.
Uh, there was a lot that needed to be said.
And Kim, you weren't here when we jumped into that, but it's, you have to have a lot of trust built before you go into that kind of individualized, hey, I'm wondering about or rating someone else. And so and I think that's why it might be kind of awkward. I know that if you were asking council to do this, I would, my pushback would be, I, I don't want council to rate any individual board member.
Yeah, just as a board.
Just as a whole, I think I would be into that space because that is awkward one and the PTSD around that doesn't just go away.
Right.
Right? Because there were fear of reprisals. But I think if you're going to rate as a whole, then you could also see the trends that you're talking about. Well, all of us said we were great at this, or many of us said that. Um, so you know, and then many of us said, we need improvement here. You can start to see that and it's less threatening. And then you start to build that level of trust.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I was assuming that it was the board as a whole, for the most part, because we are a voice of one and we function as, as one. So we.
Yeah, no, I'm not sure whose idea it was to really criticize each individual, but yes, that is what it is. And we sat around in a circle and heard everything that was wrong with us. That was good times. Um, some more than others.
Yeah. I mean, it's helpful, you know, when these topics come up, we tend to spin and not make decisions, like those, that's important to know. Um, but it's not about Janet does that or Alyssa does that or Chrissy does that. It's as a whole.
Yeah. Okay. Good feedback. Let's think of that. All right. The next thing is the standard operating procedures. We just finished this up, so I'm good with how they are.
Are you sure?
I am.
Kidding.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's no timeline of. I mean, I'd say in the summer, right? After like the school year. I don't know. Yeah, that'd be my thing. What about, it's also slower-ish than.
Sure.
Yeah. Oh my gosh.
What if, do we want to change the policy? That, that's the issue with some of these policies. It says each year, each year, which is helpful because then it's you know, it has a little bit of flexibility, but it does help future board members, I feel if it's like in the summer of each year or like something where it still allows for a little flexibility, but like it gives like a timeline. Superintendent evaluation is one. I'm always getting confused. I mean, I know it's this one, but then I'm like, oh shoot, it's coming again. And sometimes I feel like it's valuable. Valuable, but then also do you want to limit future boards from making that decision, but they could change it if they really cared about it.
Feeling like every other year is a good model because then we have elections every other year. Right? So there's the opportunity for new folks to come on. And I think that's when it's really important to review the standard operating procedures to make sure that everybody is still on the same page as we add new folk.
I get it. I don't know if WASDA, I, I feel like it's WASDA who sets the standards for every year. I think they collect the data, don't they? They don't. Okay. So e- every other year.
Every other year makes sense. I mean, we just did it last year, so we're doing it again this year. It's a really quick, like, yeah, thumbs up. It's still good.
Do we want to say in this, maybe I'm wrong here, but in odd years, because the elections take place in, in even years, right? Well, no, because
We, we don't want it.
Then we're not working together. It needs to be the following year. So isn't it, so elections? The first year of an election term is an even year because it's every, it's two-year cycles. So wouldn't it be if we did?
No, because the elections are this coming.
Right.
Our odd years.
Board.
So January of even years. Right after, because you're sworn in in December.
Right. But so this year would be a year that we did the evaluation. You all have stat on for a year and we're in 2025. So the election is in the fall, but it's the following school year of an odd year.
Are you talking about the assessment or the standard operating procedures?
SOPs.
Oh, you guys are talking about SOPs.
Yeah. I agree with you though, that it would be too soon that January to do.
I was on the self-assessment still. I went too far back.
Okay.
SOPs. This doesn't.
Can we clarify where we are?
Where were you going back to?
I was on SOPs. Went back to assessments.
Okay, wait. I'm still on assessment. Can we just?
Yeah, okay.
It says each year, it says at the conclusion of each year. Now, each calendar year, each school year?
Yeah.
I would say school year.
I would too.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Cause that's when we have downtime.
Just, can we do that? But if we don't, that was my thing. If we don't like narrow it down, it gives a little bit of flexibility, but like the end of a school year, that gives the summer, right? At the conclusion of each school year.
I'm still really confused on what page.
Okay, so we are on board self-assessment policy eighteen twenty. It, uh, it's under self-evaluation. The highlight, it just says each year. But it does, it just says each year, but calendar year, school year. So this would just say at the conclusion of ea- of each school year.
Okay.
Interpretation is that that change does not cause a significant change to the policy. And therefore we could add that language without going to first and second reading.
Yes, policy is al- already under review for first readings. So it's an easy thing to insert before you adopt in February.
Ding 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 ding.
Good answer.
I would have called it a minor adjustment.
Brian and Carmen to track.
Okay. Now, now we're going to SOPs and what are we saying to, this does not say review. Oh, it does. Hold on. Does it say?
I don't see where there's a time quantifier in here.
When we get new board members, that's when we typically just go over it. Cause then the signatures are outdated and we want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
So that would be the January, this workshop, each time new members are seated. So after the election and they're seated.
Okay, but then remember what happened when I got all.
Well, now we know. That we need to do it by section. That works really well.
Yeah, I think you start it there and do it by section.
Now, see, it was a learning experience for all. Okay, next is the meeting activity. Dot, but is there another board white? Or do we just flip one over, right? Okay. I shouldn't remember question, Carmen. She always is on top of it. Okay. So this is topics that you'd like to see. There are some standing ones that we go over. You'll, you know, you see the schedule here, what we typically. Well, this was historical. Not historical and future, the whole, it's the whole year. Um, so you'll see what there is. If there's other things that you would like to see. There is actually one thing, I don't know if it's a board meeting or just like someone looking into it or what it would take. I'm going to probably ruffle some feathers here. Our website, what would it cost?
We're already.
To get something that's a little more user-friendly.
We're, we are diving into that.
Okay.
We are.
So could we, after you research what that would look like? Could we get like a little?
Oh, we'll give you a presentation and demonstration. Just so you, you hear me say, um, Leanna knows and so does Brad, our director for IT. I went on and couldn't find something.
Yeah.
And then I went on another district and it was like three clicks, two clicks. And so I immediately said, we need to dive in.
I'm going to, I'm going to give Bremerton a shout out. I work with Bremerton for my day job and I needed to get a contact over there. And I found it in like three seconds. I mean, like they're, had their beautiful photos on there. You clicked it. I, it was just, it was very interactive. And I know, I mean, we spent our money on other things up to this point, but it is really, if I'm looking for a policy, I'm clickety-clicking before I get there.
I can do that in three clicks.
We have it bookmarked?
I just know it's about us board policy.
I, you know what? I use Google and then it takes me to the page. So I do less clicks. I know, I know my Google searches are narrowed down, but I just, for the community who doesn't know the key words to specifically search for, I, I don't know. I just, I would love to see what, but I know we're a bigger district, but anyway.
Very aware.
Yeah. And I would imagine that it would come to us as a budget request because you get what you pay for in website design.
I, I'm willing to pay. Okay. I'm just saying, that is one thing I just really feel. Because it's not just aesthetics. It helps the community.
Yeah. It's our first introduction
Yeah.
to the community.
And we've had some complaints. We've had people come to the board meetings and say, I'm having a difficult time with your website. It shouldn't be this hard. And I feel like we would get less emails of like, who should we contact if it was there? So anyway, sounds like it's already happening. So I'll get off my soapbox. So if anyone um, else has things.
I would appreciate more educator um, FaceTime.
Okay. And we have talked about this.
Okay.
Um, and I'll give a, so one thing was listen, we could maybe do less extremes, but so we have our schedule now for board reports, like report outs from schools. It was suggested we do like twenty-four a year. Remember that? It was two a month. It might've been to a meeting.
To a meeting.
To a meeting. We would have been here. We would have been spending the night. Um, so I'm open to ways of getting more. It was a time of like, there was no middle ground. It was like, take it or leave it. And we were trying to not create an extreme workload for the schools, but I, I agree. There are months that we have breaks, you know, December, July.
We've been pretty strategic because certain months have conferences, this or that. When we had that request, I did a little bit of research and um, it was like for every fifteen minutes of a presentation, an administrator had to put in two or three out, two hours. Yeah. And it was, it was a massive amount of time and it's where do we want administrators spending that time? And so, you know, we're open to and to, to a different number. And then I would want to meet with the instructional council to, to go, okay, how does this impact? The two per month, yeah, it became, it was kind of, or two per meeting. It was, it was ridiculous in order to get every school in.
No, I don't think I was clear enough then. I want authentic. I don't want a presentation.
Right.
You want to talk to teachers.
Yes.
What does that look like?
Not just, not just teachers, educators. I want to talk to paraprofessionals. I want to talk. Yeah.
About what? It's just like what?
Anything.
I hear you and it's important, but when they're sitting here as intimidating as
They need to prep.
are not.
They need to know what we want.
Like we're thinking, oh yeah, have a conversation, but some people aren't as comfortable with that. So what there had, would have to be some sort of standard format of, hey, when you come to talk, this is what we're looking for, which is why we have a standardized board report for everyone. So
Okay.
they know what they're getting into. They know what to expect.
There's also the expectation of board members staying above the line and not getting into the details of the work. And that can be a tug. It's easy if you're in a space where somebody has something going on that is either emotional or they just have a lot of energy around it. It's easy. I can't, I'm not complaining, but I'm telling you, I can't go to a basketball game without an employee or somebody wanting to tug me into that space, right? And I understand that and that's part of my role, but I also have to go, because you said X means I need to go to the people who are around that. Like your X doesn't mean that's that, right? And so my concern would be that somebody's going to tug you in a space and now you're asking me to do this or that based on that tug and that goes below the line, right? And if that's what you want your superintendent doing, three of you say yes as a board, then I will restructure what I did.
No, I'm, I'm thinking more along the lines of, you know, when we go and we're visiting um, the schools and you go with us. Opportunities to attend their events without anybody with us, but yet they know we're coming and.
Oh, and we can, isn't there a list of activities?
Yeah, no, I know that. But again, I'm, I'm unsure of the protocol.
You can just go.
Well, what we do is we look to get the schedule. So you have a list of schools and we want to know, okay, there, here's a parent event happening. So we want to have that schedule, but we do ask that you work with Carmen.
I was talking about a basketball, like a basketball game.
No, that's different. Yeah.
That is different. Don't just be showing up to a parent night, I guess.
Oh.
Well, we want the principal, we want folks to know that you're going to be there, right? So that's just the protocol that we've had established since I was a principal.
Yeah, no, that. Ignore what I said. I was thinking more like sports and arts and.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Well, I'm wondering about the, the board reports that we get from the schools and I appreciate the pillars. And I'm more curious about these things. Like I would like to hear when the principals are talking to us about their test scores and what they're doing um, in their schools curriculum-wise to close opportunity gaps, how they're building connections with families. Those are the pieces that I'm much more concerned about. And it would be lovely to have maybe a para educator or a teacher speak to something that they're doing to affect one of those things as a part of that parent or principal report.
Like a spotlight within a spotlight? Kind of? I don't know.
If they're comfortable. That would be, because I mean, the principal's telling it secondhand, right? The teacher or the para educator would be telling it firsthand.
I don't know that I would say that. Yes, the principal's telling it from their perspective, but our expectation is that the principal's telling it from firsthand being in the room, supporting, et cetera. But I, I see what you're saying. There, there's a level of separation.
I think both are valuable. I don't want to discount the, the principal's story and view. I'm just wondering if there are places that we can sometimes add to it.
Right. And so like when that whole school and they were all sitting there supporting their principal and none of them talked. Such an opportunity.
I hear you. I don't necessarily disagree. I'm going to play the devil's advocate for just a moment. Cause I feel like that is my job. With, as Superintendent Banner said, we're at like the thirty thousand foot level. That's what we always said, always say. Voices are important to be heard. What could happen, you know, you have the relationship moved down the line to teacher, para educators. Then sometimes it's a, I'm going to bypass all appropriate levels of um,
Protocol.
Protocol and go straight to the board, which we've, I've had happen before. Not that I was creating a relationship with them, but it was like, I'm going to bypass it. What I worry is if we don't stay at the thirty thousand foot level, everyone's allowed to complain to us. They have the emails, they have our phone. we don't stay at the thirty thousand foot level, everyone's allowed to complain to us. They have the emails, they have our phone numbers, whatever it may be. But if you, I don't wanna say it's a barrier, but if you lessen the thirty thousand foot view, it could open us up to all the problems go directly to the board. And then now we've bypassed the principal, the, um,
I wonder if what I'm hearing is in the report and what I'd like to do is come back to the instructional council because we look at what the report formatting, excuse me, is on an annual basis. And so I'm wondering if in the report we, let me pose additional voices to be shared, right? And we'll, and let us, let us throw that around a little bit and, and get back in the, in terms of the format. And keeping in mind where this means we have that information by June to apply for the twenty six, twenty five, twenty six school year.
And maybe just updating the format, right? We've used the same thing for a long time. And this has been posed before, but once again, we kinda had to push back because of the extreme changes that were proposed and no middle ground to be found. There was a, at a time, the four pillars were, they're very important and they're accurate and they are, but it was like a passion project. I don't know, would that be a thing? And so that got like in there to be like front and center. And so I, we get the test scores with, but I don't, and student growth percentiles, but maybe there's a way to make it more personable. Right now it's like very rugged and it kinda needed to be that way. You know, like here's the data, here's the information and, um, it was done that way intentionally.
It was done that way intentionally to, again, prevent our principals from being attacked. Right? And, and we recognize that we're in a different space. And so, yeah, I think we can look at the board report, look at some different ways or additions and then come back to you with, would this fit your need?
I love that idea, you know, thinking about how do you incorporate more, um, employee voice, student voice? And just like, when somebody comes, tell me the story of your school. Like what's amazing about your school? What, what's something unique about your school? What? So that way we can tell those stories out in the community. That's what I wanna hear.
And if you can't have a student that late, maybe you have a student on video or some, you know, there, I think we can.
Or a piece of student work or a quote from a student or yeah, they don't have to physically be here.
Yeah. And there is usually student work posted around the board.
Yeah, sometimes.
Yeah. I don't know if every time, but one thing that goes along with this is that I can't remember what we put on last year, the year before, whatever, um, was the youth council. Now it falls along the lines of if they want to. I do find that your council is, or student council is eager and they, you know, they present at the, um, city council, or well, that's, that's different, but it's the same kids. But, um, I would like to see that, like what are they doing? Like annually or maybe twice a year? If they're willing. I, that's the thing is like, I'm not gonna force anyone. That's not a requirement. They don't have to come here after hours, but yeah, if they can't come to the meeting that late at night, maybe they could do a video update. Cause we hear it from you, which is great, but it's really impressive to hear it from the kids. So, and we don't have a student board member, what are they called? I can't remember, which we have pushed back on greatly throughout the years because it's one student or maybe two speaking for the dis, like the district. And if you, Wazda will say, you should have this, you should have this. But then when I went to a meeting, I said, well, we actually have the superintendent youth council and it's this large voice of, or larger group of students, they liked that idea better. So I actually feel like what we're doing is better. But I also would like those voices to get to the board level sent, not that they don't, but like direct. Um, since we don't have a student voice on, on the board.
And I like an and, I, I definitely appreciate the, the council and would not want that to go away to add a student rep on our board. And I think we could do both. But that's a conversation for another time.
But yes, um, yeah, we have new voices on. We had a board member that was very against it. I don't think that.
Yeah. And again, quite frankly, you know, we're we're treading new ground with functionality. And I will be honest with you, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have exposed any of our students to the previous functionality. Um, and so we're, we might be in a different place.
Yeah. And I, it is important too, as we're setting policy, like if we were to move such a thing forward, should the board become dysfunctional again? There's an out clause, right? Hopefully that never happens again, but just there, there needs to be an out clause.
It's the SOPs. I would sit down with you all and have a conversation that what's the out clause? Cause I will never damage students or.
For sure. Yeah. Or any of your staff. They shouldn't be subjected to that.
All right. Any other ideas for what you, types of activity you wanna see? I mean, honestly, okay. So one thing that was added. What, what was it?
Quarterly.
AIC.
AIC, which is the Academic Instructional Council.
Academic Improvement Committee.
I was making up my own. Okay. No, I'm just showing the acronyms. I just, you know, what does it look like in my head? I'll just go with that. Um, it is important. I, I get lost in some of the data and the acronym sometimes because it really, I, I don't know if it really was. Not that it's not meant for the board, board, but the history of why it was brought to this was just data, data, data. And people were bringing data points and they were like, okay, whatever. Let's see the actual data. I don't know if I need it quarterly. I'm just saying, like I, it's, it's good information to have, but I feel like a lot of the information is repeating from the previous quarter, but it was a requirement that they were quarterly updates. So my suggestion would maybe bring that down to an annual, um, report or maybe two times a year. Brian, do you have any in, insight on that? Like, I don't know. I like.
Feel, well, I feel like first I would say yes. And I feel like, um, one, we may be restructuring some things. Um, but this, um, accountability plan, you know, you said, I think you said it really well. These things, we don't need to see all these things, but we, because those things add up to this. And all of the AIC adds up to this accountability plan. Right? And so it can be very excessive. And again, those reports, when Brian and his team do those reports.
Takes time.
Every fifteen minutes of those reports take a substantial amount of time to prepare and practice, et cetera. So I, I feel like you get an AIC update every time we do a, an accountability plan update. And every time we do a CTE report and every time we do the open doors, GLA report, right? All of those reports that I think you get it then.
I agree. I'm, I know that y'all are doing a lot of, um, innovative things. And so to hold some time on the schedule for like, what is new and innovative that you're doing to get updates about the, the new bilingual school that'll be launching next year, to get updates about partnerships with different community agencies and how that's, um, yeah, things that we can't readily find if you don't tell us.
And have you ever had the board meetings at the schools themselves? Like, you know how I missed it, but I guess Lockburn was here. Was it this, or we got that nice bag from them that was here? So instead of us having Lockbird come here, did we ever go to them and we had the, the school board meeting there?
It, I think that may have happened. I don't recall it happening with me in the seat, um, but I'm not.
At Man one time. And the issue is for a, there were pros and cons. Okay. So the pros, you gotta go to different sites. The con is when you change meetings, so can't, city council just did it and you missed it. You know, maybe the communication goes out of where it is, but then you know, someone doesn't check the website or where it's looking for, and then they miss it. They come here. I'm not saying we have a large crowd. At some points we do. So there, yeah, the con is you're moving it away from the standard home base. And so someone may have the intention of coming and miss it. The pro is you're at a site. However, we do school visits and so it's like, we do get access to the site. So it's just like, I think we sat in the library when we did it at Man and I cannot remember why we had that meeting at Man.
Oh, we had a meeting.
No, it was Man before it got.
Or was it a, I remember that one. We had a, a bond presentation.
Yeah, the bond presentation. Oh, to the site. We were, that, that is why there was a purpose for it. We were looking at the site cause Thomas was getting built on it, but no one attended that meeting. So that's the, I mean, I'm, I'm, it's just honest. I mean, it's, um, so I feel like it maybe closes off the community more, or maybe it could encourage a s- school to come to that meeting, cause it's in there. I don't know. I mean, I guess you could do a survey of like, would you like to see it? But I feel like this is pretty centrally located. So I'm not, I just kinda prefer it to be here. But not saying that it couldn't be somewhere else.
I just thought it would give another opportunity for, um, students to showcase.
Yeah, that's true. The students weren't coming to the meeting though. No one was staying.
Something to think about. Um, if we were gonna, if it was going to be equitable, we'd have to go on base and I don't know if the community would all want to go out for that meeting. And so that could create some roadblocks for people.
To say the least. Okay. The basis is.
Had one thing too. I think, you know, I hear a lot about wanting to have the students come and hear from them or hear from staff and it's hard to recreate what happens during the school day in our buildings every single day. And so I really wanna just reiterate that and, you know, encourage, like what could that look like for board members to go out? Maybe more. Um, because again, the real work happens during the school day.
Yeah. And that's a valid point on, I feel like the burden should, I, I say burden lightly. It's not really a burden, but the burden should be placed on the board members to make an effort to go out and try to see the authentic learning rather than in some ways inconveniencing families or students like, hey, the board wants to hear from you. So you come to them. We should be going to them, in my opinion. Um, okay. So to go back to, I think we said, are we removing the IC as a whole or are we keeping like, is this suggestion to be like annually? Any insight on that?
My thought you, everything was already covered with the goal, so we don't have to do it at all.
Yeah. And, and so you, yes, when you have the, um, the, the review of the accountability plan, the narratives that go along with the presentation are the culmination of AIC work, right?
The presentation is not there. I find the presentation valuable, but like one time a year. Because then you see the visuals and what things they're doing in the classrooms and interventions and you can read it. It's slightly different reading it than having it presented and being able, I mean, you can ask questions, but like being, asking questions in real time. So my suggestion would be to have it just like once a year and remove the additional three.
Consensus? Yes.
Sure.
Do we have a consensus on the superintendent youth council voice too? Okay. Do we need to, do I need to write it down? As willing.
Yeah, they're willing.
What time do they have their meetings?
One to two per year.
Well, it depends. So the folks who are on the town, what is it called?
What was your question?
When do they have their meetings?
Oh, we have meetings about, uh, we just had one last week, um, six times a year.
During the school day.
During the school day, yes.
So I was just asking what, what time would that be? I mean, that would just be like going to a school and doing a school visit.
No, we have the meetings. Yes. It would be like coming here eleven, the last meeting was eleven to twelve thirty.
I will say there is something, I mean, probably not all board members go, cause then you have to announce it as a meeting, whatever, but, um, the one I went to is, it was like a fishbowl activity and it was like feelings around the cops versus teachers basketball game. And it was actually fascinating to listen to the work, their thought process. And I mean, hopefully we don't have something like that. I mean, I.
Well, like if you were here last week at the meeting, they have three groups that they're doing work projects in. One is vape prevention and awareness. Um, and they're gonna be doing videos again. Um, another one is mental health awareness and the other one is, uh, prepping to go out to, um, nursing homes and veteran homes to do. Uh, just honestly, we played bingo, board games, et cetera. Then there was a subset last week of students that went down to the conference room in the secondary office and they were connected via Zoom to the s, um, the SBA consortium, I think, right? The researchers behind the, the, um, our annual test. And they just wanted feedback from students on what do they think about the test? And so, uh, they gave probably about thirty to forty minutes of feedback to these researchers. And then, um, it was interesting because one of them came up to me afterwards and he goes, you know, I'm giving feedback and I'm a senior, but the kids behind me are gonna benefit from that. And so, you know, it was kinda cool. And so then they came back and got back into their groups and worked. So right now we're into the space of work sessions, but it would be great, you know, to have visitors come in like yourselves, um, to kinda see what they're doing and hear what they're doing. And, um, it's amazing work.
Um, as those meetings are approaching, they could be added to the Friday briefing about what's happening.
Absolutely. We'll actually send you invites. I mean, I have a note here that says invite board directors, SYAC. And it says tests at the top.
You can coordinate, like if more than one of us says we wanna attend, like you can say, hey, hold off till next month.
We would do an RSVP and, you know, the first two.
Are there enough even, cause sometimes even two can throw off the low, right?
We're always concerned about that, ensuring that. And I would ask that you guys, you know, we would have a kind of a little briefing because we don't wanna one throw off the, you know, it's like adding someone to a PLC, cause that's what they are, little professional learning communities. Um, you can throw the vibe off. And so, um, we would prep them as well. And yeah.
All right. Anything else? All right. Then we will move to policies to this, for discussion of any policies you may wanna talk about. I, there is one that I wanna, the absence of a board member. So it says here, and I, I know this is a Wazda policy that says the board may declare a board member's position vacant after four consecutive unexcused absences. Yes. One eighty nine. Do we really have the authority to do that? No, I know that, but I mean,
Used absence me.
Well, there is, it says, it says, um, other than illness authorized by resolution of the board or active training or military duty. My thing is do we really like have the authority to do that? That's, and I don't know who would have the answer to that. I don't know if it's the auditor's office, like say they, someone didn't show up for four meetings. They're like, no, I'm still very much on the board. You can't take my position away. The community voted me in and you need to go back out to vote to kick me off the board.
Well, okay. So here's my question. So last time when I wasn't here, was I excused or was I not excused? Because I was on trip.
Well, you were excused cause the board didn't have an issue with it. One eighty nine. I'm just trying to figure out, like, I get that this is policy. Do we really have the legal authority to do this? Because when we were exploring options of past issues, it was pretty much like it's an impossible task to get someone off a board and it has to go back out to the community.
I think, but that person was actively. I think, but that person was actively engaged. I think this is if you disappear.
Well, no, I, but that's what I'm saying. What if they disappear and then we say, oh, your position's vacant. And they're like, oh, wait a minute.
It's a R C W.
Yeah, I think.
Is it an R C W?
Well, the R C W is referenced in the bottom and what I would do is I would send your question out to legal counsel.
That's the thing. I, I, whatever. I mean, it hasn't happened. I'm just curious, like. So we post that it's vacant and we go for it. But what if the person like comes up here and sits in their seat? I'm like, I just don't know. Like, I'm here. Hello.
We did have one time where we had a board member who was vague or was absent for a number of times, but I think they chose to resign from their.
Oh, and that's what we, yeah, kind of had.
Instead of, because the R C W asks for you to declare by resolution that such board member position is vacated. So you would be moving a resolution saying that they don't, they haven't come four times. They've unexcused. You'd have to put a resolution forward to make that happen.
Well, whatever. If it's an R C W.
But we did have somebody couple of boards ago that they, but they chose to resign and took on this route.
Okay. I mean, I guess an R C W, I'm just like, all right. But yes, there was a difference. One was active, one's not. I, I was just curious.
Is this something that the board would like me to look into or?
No, I was just a question. I, it's an R C W. I, I, if it's in an R C W, I'm good. That's, that's enough for me. I should have looked at the references, but here I am.
On, on policy one, one zero five, what? Why did we change the title Director Districts versus Electoral System?
One, what page?
Oh, sorry. Uh, one sixty-two.
You want it, you don't want it to be the electoral system?
No, I was just wondering why was the title changed? Because are we, are we still referring to them as districts or not?
Yeah, I was to just, we do consider them.
Oh, so it's a WASTA change. Oh, okay.
And there's, yeah, rules regarding like, like our boundaries just changed for director districts.
Yep.
A couple of years ago. All right. Anything else?
Alyssa, did you realize that they increased your job duties? Um, on policy number one, two, two, zero. And it is now your job to oh, I'm sorry. One sixty-eight. It is now your job, um, to help each board member learn how to be an effective board member and feel valued.
We removed that language. Wait. Did we keep that? Okay, in all, full disclosure. You're too, you should have seen the changes. I was like, I should have been C E O of this place with the changes that were made. Okay. With my fifty dollars a meeting, I wasn't doing any of that. Okay. But I, it was like, I needed to meet with people and I don't know.
And that passage is highlighted by Kelsey Winters from WASTA because it's district language. It's not WASTA language.
I think that was the middle ground that we chose.
Probably is what we settled on.
I, I wish I could go, I probably have it. The red line changes. I was like, I was supposed to meet with people and tell them how to do their job and bring them into this. I'm like, you're an elected official. Be proactive. Yeah, I think so. That, no, that was, if I've my memory is serving me right, that was my middle ground of sure, I'll make you feel valued, but I, I really, of course you want people to be valued, but I don't actually know if it's the president's responsibility to do that. It's the board as a whole should be making people feel valued. That's like, I don't know.
Was born of a very contentious moment that, like you said, it was middle ground that you settled on. That was like a whole series of bias confirmation.
Well, and then it further goes on to say that, uh, the vice president will be the liaison to WASTA.
Yeah, that, okay. So the purple language. Okay, so okay, let's start at the first one and try to get a consensus of that and then we'll work our way down. As a board, do we think that it's the president, not just me, just let's just say the president, um, is it their responsibility to teach someone how to be effective board member? I, I, there's some validity to that, right? Because when you, uh, right, let's go, bring it back to last January's meeting, I made the assumption that people knew how to be at the board meeting. That wasn't necess, that wasn't true. So then I stepped back and it's like, how can I do this differently? So we understand. So I do think that there's some validity to help each board member learn how to be an effective board member, because that is a learned thing. And I do think that the role should help people feel valued, but I don't think it's a single person's individual responsibility to make someone feel valued.
Yeah, I would vote to strike out the feel valued from there. That's something that we should all be working to do. I think for the first part, I would propose the president or a designee will help each new, because that way, if we have new people coming on, there's like somebody that you can reach out. You know, when, when three of us came on as new, that's a lot to ask the president. Um, but you could delegate that to other people so that new people get on boarded.
I mean, I definitely designated a lot of that to Carol. She had been on the board for three hundred years. So she knew better than me, though.
I, I would agree with that.
I'm close to it.
I'm telling her you said three hundred.
I mean, her retirement, she would have got quite the retirement if you got do that. But anyway.
The retirement plan is an average of your top five years. Fifty dollars a meeting. Time tower meetings, top, yeah.
Listen.
So we might get ten dollars a month is what he's saying.
I still remember when they were like, you're, it's a requirement to fill out the travel, travel feedback form. And she was like, yeah. Until I get a retirement, I'm not doing that.
Wait, we don't have to fill that out. It's like those questions. Those questions. What did you learn? What are you going to bring back?
It's encouraged. It was, someone was trying to make it a fourth, oh, excuse me. They wanted it printed out and handed out to every board member so we could critique said feedback. I'm just trying to. It was fun times. You missed a lot of great.
Leave her response was also last I checked, I'm not a staff member.
Yeah, she did. Yeah, you're right. Listen, there was good times. You missed a lot of good times. Okay. So good. Okay. Really good times. Okay. So the vice president leads the superintendent's evaluation committee. That is actually true since we were still ramping up.
Okay.
I still have taken over that, but and we're missing the vice president tonight anyways. But yes, that is something that was delegated to the vice president role, and that's unique to our district. It's not, I mean, it might not be unique, but it's not obviously standard language. And then additionally, the vice president will serve as the liaison between the board and the Washington. Okay, so this was due to our policy update. I don't I don't think it's a negative at this point, so we had some conflict of like, who would be the point person? So then we just put it under the vice president's role since we were paying for this WASTA update. And it was so that the board could provide feedback and then like there was a liaison. I don't actually disagree with it. I think it's a good place to have in case this happens again. And then folks know who's supposed to be the liaison. And then individual duties. Once again, the duties of individual board members that came from people not following the standard operating procedures. So they were like, well, it's not in policy. So then we put it in policy.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I still it does close the gap between this standard operating procedures and, um, policies. However, if you look at Robert's rule, it's a standard operating procedures is right in there. Like you're, you're supposed to follow them. So, um, I don't think it's like a requirement to have it in there, but I also just don't think it's a huge negative either.
But it makes sense the way you said it. Yeah, I just didn't understand.
Yeah, yeah, because most people probably would have just followed the standard operating procedures. This is a good reminder, though, that we don't do the legislative rep, like it's a two-year term.
Did that just happen though? Is that new?
Okay, no, it shows it in here. I thought we talked about that though.
Oh, the struck language in that passage is what you guys changed the WASTA language.
Oh, so we're changing it back.
You're changing, if you accept this, it would be changing it back to the original WASTA language.
Oh, yeah. I can't remember. Someone was against it being a two-year term.
Yes.
Correct guess, but I'm just gonna. Someone, someone didn't like it. So yes, let's go back. I'm, I'm for going back to the standard way of doing it.
Yeah, I agree. I think it takes you a year to figure it out.
It does. Yes, yes, yeah.
And, okay. Policy fourteen hundred, page one eighty-four. It's in red, meeting recordings. Is it in red? Because, I mean, I know that's a requirement, but did we not have it before? The recording of the meetings, I thought that.
Wait. Page one eighty-four?
Oh, and one eighty-five, the red's on the back of it.
Okay. Sorry, I was looking at the red on one eighty-four. I mean, we have been doing this. We probably just didn't have the language in the policy because it hadn't been updated, but COVID changed all that and then I guess it. Yeah. I mean, it's good for transparency anyway, so I'm probably a law.
Meetings accidentally don't get recorded and that's okay too. Right? Yeah, I saw that. Yeah. Oh, we can't account for technical glitches. So occasionally there will be one that isn't recorded. But we make every effort. Maybe it should say.
This law probably says we have to do it though, right? I mean, there's going to be technical glitches, but I just language is there. If we have a hiccup, I mean, we tried our best. Right. Anything else? It's just a lot of.
So is the, the purple, the underlying purple just reinstating what WASTA had already done? And we excluded it?
No, um, so anything, even if it's red or purple, I think that's just who was doing the track changes, like. I mean, I know that when I do track changes, one person's might be red and then another person touches the document and they're blue. And then another person touches it and they're a different color. But these had not been updated. Not all, but some for a long time. So this is just standardizing the language with WASTA policies.
It looks like based on the comments, the red is WASTA stuff and the purple is district recommendations that aren't WASTA.
That makes sense.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Okay.
Did first reading, second reading and adoption is in, uh, February. So what? Any of the changes would be changed for the second reading. And if you, again, we wanted to make sure you had opportunity to discuss tonight. So if you felt like there was a need to postpone the second reading and adoption, that's also a possibility. So.
All right. Okay, so now we'll go to the legislative update.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I was just, I was wondering about a conversation about the next series for um, WASTA to review. We were recommending the two thousand series. There's a memo in front of the memo about the thousand series.
Yes, I'm fine with that. Does anyone have any?
That's fine.
All right. Now the legislative update.
Yeah, so I met with Ron. The time blurs. I think it was last week. I don't remember. Just going over some of the bills that have recently been, um, brought forward in the legislature. Around the big three, so the the M SOC, the maintenance operating, the basic stuff that we have to do as a district to make sure that we have supplies and operating costs for, for things. There's a couple of different bills. That have been presented, like there's a House bill and then there's the Senate bill. It's very interesting when I was going through and comparing them. You know, just kind of, kind of wondering. There's one that, that takes the approach that it starts with a big money increase just off the bat. And then the other one goes for ten percent. Um, and then they both have I P D, which is the implicit price deflector increase. And so that's not exactly COLA, but it's, it's what the, the government uses to determine basically cost of living, but not really. It's usually lower than cost of living. So there are those. We've got a few special education funding bills. What I found when I had more time tonight, because I thought I was giving this presentation yesterday. And so, yeah. That that Senate Bill fifty-three oh seven and, uh, House Bill thirteen ten are actually identical. And so I was like, oh, that's just bizarre. But anyway, I could have been really tired when I looked at those, but they, they looked the same, even though the people who they, they, they both deal with cost multipliers.
You said one was a Senate bill and one was a House bill. So they probably got people to drop them in both. And then when they go to reconciliation, it's easier.
Thanks. Okay, that makes a lot more sense. Um, but the, the one that, that tends to be, uh, most popular in terms of what is best, it, um, would technically then be the House Bill thirteen ten, which is essentially the same as fifty-three oh seven. Because it, it does deal with the multiplier. Now, there is the transportation one and it calls for a study, which means nothing really is going to get done. They're going to propose a study and then great, we're going to have a couple of years to study. And then I think it's in twenty twenty-nine thirty that maybe that'll come out with some kind of actual money that could be attached to changing the transportation funding. Fun times. One thing that isn't in the big three, but I thought was very interesting is there's, um, a Senate Bill fifth, uh, five thousand seven that deals with chronically absent students. And I, I thought that was, um, interesting too, because I was, I was paying very close attention to the words subject to the availability of amounts appropriated for this specific purpose, which meant funded, a funded mandate. Woo. Um, so I was, I was, you know, a little pleased and I'm really glad to see that they're understanding that our chronically absent students, um, need more support than what we can give them. So that was exciting to see. One of the things that just came out that I thought was super interesting too, was, um, that they dropped a bill about consolidating the SEB program and the P E B program. And so, um, there from what I've read, there's no cost savings to do that. And but I think there could be more problems than benefits. But again, that's just something to keep in mind because it does impact educational employees versus public sector. And then I believe, uh, Mari Lovett, she And then I believe uh Mari Lovett, she has a cellphone. Uh, bill. Okay. Um, and I think it's to limit the use. House Bill eleven-twenty-two, to limit the use of cellphones during the school day. And there's another one out there about getting the bond passage rate to fifty-five percent instead of sixty, because there were many um districts. In surrounding areas that they actually could have passed a bond had that fifty-five percent rate um already been in effect. So, just something else to do and uh of course WASDA is still supporting, no, no unfunded mandates, please. We don't. Don't pass anything that you're not gonna pay for, because we don't have that money either. So. That is my update.
Let me ask you a question. Um, you know, the ledge session just started. Um, and bills drop fast and furiously and die fast and furiously. So do you have an idea of? The traction of any of the bills that you spoke to? Like, does there seem to be support for them or?
There are a lot of hearings. There are a lot of hearings right now, and so um. I know. With my contacts, there are people, we're encouraging people to sign in pro and con for different things. Um. But no, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, Ron, my no.
Oh.
Well, I just think that your big three has been very well recognized by our legislators, um, because. Agencies, associations from across the state are promoting the special education M-SOC and. Transportation, because any gains there will positively impact all districts at their scale, right? Um. And so I think there's some traction in special education. Now, traction now really gets down, last year we had traction in special education to. Gosh, I think it was eight hundred million dollars and then it turned into like. I don't know, four hundred by the end of the session, because at a certain point, it's bargaining and making deals and we'll do this if you do that. Um, but I believe the M's, the big three are, are very, the traction is there as um. Uh Director Caldwell indicated, the transportation is more of a glide path to something in twenty-twenty-nine, twenty-thirty. Um, and so um even. Even that is movement um to the archaic formula that they use right now. Um, so it's something to look forward to. Um, but. I think those three do have traction and we are stressing the word paramount. Paramount means the most important and it is a paramount duty for them to fund public education. Um. Just because they like this bill or like that bill, great, but your paramount duty is here and as was stated last night, uh we expect to hear. One of the first things we expect to hear is, yeah, but. Fourteen million, fifteen, or excuse me, billion, billion dollar shortfall. And so um. So our job is to press, but.
Right.
I think the big three is getting traction, it's being talked about, um, and they know. When you, you know, I haven't walked in yet or gone into a Zoom room yet, but I, my colleagues are saying that they, they are opening with, so tell me about the big three. Because it's, it's something that they knows, it has traction. From us, so then they're giving it. It's just due. So, but again, we'll see. Hundred and five days.
Yeah, and the one thing I did forget to mention is they, in the transportation bill, they do talk about um additional funding for uh McKinney-Vento students. Who need transportation, because they recognize that uh. It's not enough.
Update. The other items are just discussion items, so the building assignment list for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, um. So just take a look at that.
It did, when I discussed that, actually. So, um, what has been happening is every year we're assigned new schools to visit. And I would like to propose that maybe we keep the same schools for a four-year term. Um. It's really hard. You go into a school. For one year and then you're assigned a different school for another, so you don't get to track growth over time. Or build any relationships or get a, a real sense for the school in just one year. Um, and I recognize there can be issues like we talked about before of having folks come into the school about, well, then they think. You're the board member and you're gonna solve all the problems, but I think that's knowing our role as a board member and saying, have you taken it through your chain of command? Like, this isn't my, my issue to address. Um. But for me personally, relationships and community is really important and I'm, I'm finding it hard. Um. With so many schools, I, I only get to one, you know, a maximum of twice a year usually and. So that, that's my proposal. For a conversation.
I hear, I, I get that as someone who has visited a school more than once, because I've. On the board for a little while. I don't, I, just my input, I don't per, I don't see as much value the second time that I go as the first time, because is this. The visit's pretty standard. You go and visit the classrooms, you see what they're doing, there might be a slight difference, but. The programs are similar and. So I personally really enjoy seeing new schools of, because you know, you may be on the board for four years, you may be on for longer, but if you kept the same schools for your four. Four years. Then during your time on the board, you could potentially only see five of the twenty-six. Six. Twenty-three sites. So that would be my thing is I. I, just from someone who's visited a school more than once, I find like the principal may not. Have a different viewpoint, like maybe you'd go into different classrooms, but um I worry. I find value in visiting the new schools, I guess, every year, but. I don't know, what, anyone else have input on that?
No, because I'm just trying to get to those schools.
Yeah. Any input on maybe what the principals would feel if they had the same. Board member. For four years?
I, I just think the value of, we have so many different diverse schools, um. I don't know if it would serve you as well as you would think to see the same ones over and over. I mean, I love going to schools that aren't mine and visit, there, there's so much. Differences going on in different schools. I, I do agree. It, it doesn't matter to us, it really doesn't. Relationships, I think that's. It, it really doesn't make a difference for our principals, but I think for you to see. How vastly different. A lot of the schools are.
E. I, I would agree with what I'm hearing from Tess. And the reason is, if you don't get to the other spaces, you never see them. And I remember, um. I don't know, it was probably five, six years ago, we just went on a tour. And several board members didn't even kind of really, oh, this is our area, too, right? And, and I think you miss that, um, if you don't get through and see a lot um in that time period.
I'd like a tour.
I think it could be limiting.
Yeah, tours.
A tour.
I'd like a tour.
Be careful what you say out loud.
I, I mean, I've grown up in life my whole life and I hadn't, I mean, hadn't gone to all those places and I'm like, oh, I didn't realize that these. This apartment complex was even back here or whatever, it just um. Provided a good insight on our community as a whole, so yeah, that might be a good, since we have a. Board.
Well, and, and then, you know, even maybe not all four years, but what if you did, too? And what if, what if you were the pilot school board director and you, you know, you kept your schools and then you could report out how that went? And if that would be something that. You know, like it wouldn't.
What if? We. Put this in the parking lot at this moment and got. Brian's input on what he thought and then. There will be a board member here soon, um, just to get a greater input, since we have some differing opinions, it would be good to get some. Additional feedback of what people think. That work?
Um, and I do like seeing the variety of schools. That's why I think a, a tour in addition would be nice, because that way I can take a whole day off and we can visit lots of different sites in a day. Because when I do a, a site visit. I usually do it over my lunch break or comp time or something.
I should clarify that the tour is more of just a school bus riding tour of the community, wasn't that what we?
Oh.
It wasn't a tour of all the sites, it was, or the schools even. It was like, here's where, like, you know, maybe. This group, here's a challenge that comes from this area of the community and.
That would be valuable, too.
It really is.
I'm glad you clarified, because a tour of every site would be.
Yeah, you couldn't get us to every site.
Um, but we do go to all of the areas that we serve in the school district. Yes.
Still fascinating.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll come back to that. And talk about it.
Come on.
Okay. Oh, sorry, I missed the remarks at the city council. Um. Dave. Did you talk to? John about putting these quarterly, because they're still really interested in that?
I have a meeting next week, but I haven't had, didn't have one in December, and so no, we haven't had the conversation.
Talking about it and then. Brian was asking me, I'm like, but we haven't talked about it, but they are really wanting to put it quarterly and I do think that that does. I think that could provide value. There'd be a more substantial report than just like a month. If you get the December report, oh, our kids are on. Winter break.
Is that a reciprocal, like they would come to us quarterly, we would go to them quarterly? Could you put that up my agenda for our meeting? Yeah.
Anyway, just see what they think. I think.
Certainly.
City, I, I don't want to speak for the city council as a whole.
As I speak to him about that, can I get, what do, what do you guys feel? Like, I just want to know how to.
I think we already had come to consensus on that, maybe a couple of meetings ago, that we were, right?
I have zero idea, but I actually got to do one, finally. After an entire year.
So we would look to do that immediately or in, as we move into the next school year? It's either.
I think the city council has had more discussion than we have, so maybe just see what they are wanting and then let us in. I mean, I could.
Sounds like a plan.
Brian, but I'm like, you know, let's just do the appropriate channel. He was more like, what's an update? And I was like, I don't have one, so.
Well, and I see the vacancy on the third, so if that needs to be filled, I can do that since Janet covered for me in January when I was sick.
Perfect. Well, since we haven't had a change yet. I'm, I'm starting to think city council thinks you're already on quarterly. They've missed the past couple of meetings. What? I'm just saying. Yeah. They're probably like, why do they keep showing up? I, I, yeah, I'm just kidding. We are on the. Yeah, anyway. Okay, sounds good. Alright. It is time for executive session for the superintendent's evaluation. So we will do that, I. I'd say like, let's say thirty minutes. We can extend it if needed, but I think there's three of us. I feel like thirty minutes will. Will be sufficient, so we'll be back. Do my homework, write the report. Nice, okay. Alright.
I read the report. I did. I read the entire packet.
I read the report. I did. I read the entire packet.
We're back from executive session and it's 8:04 and we will be adjourned. Thank you everybody.
Thank you.